Welcome to the 2016 Candidates' Forums. Tonight is our first forum, and we are pleased to have representatives from Ward 1, 2, and 3 present to answer questions that have come from the audience. We have received several from the community on our website. And the Wilmer Area League of Women Voters is so pleased to have audience here. We thank everyone for coming, a full house. We thank all of you candidates for your willingness to serve in our city of Wilmer. We're so pleased that you're all here. Just to make a note, Ward 4 is not present tonight because Shawn Muskie went uncontested. So he asked that his time be devoted to others who have a contest, and so we do not have Shawn with us tonight. Before we begin, I want to read the mission of the League of Women Voters, and this is a mission that serves truly the United States. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government and influence public policy through education, such as tonight, and advocacy. So we're pleased to offer this to the community and for our audience. We will have a Candidates' Forum every Tuesday the month of October as well. So today, we are so pleased to have live on TV this particular Candidates' Forum. You will find it on Rack 18 and 181. It is also live on our Wilmer City website tonight, wilmermin.gov. And you can also just pick it up on demand as you have time with our KWLAM radio station. They are recording this tonight, and our city website, again, wilmermin.gov. So we will begin. And tonight, the first thing we will ask of our candidates is opening remarks and introduction of each one of them, and we will begin with Linda Catcher of Ward 1.
Good evening. I want to thank you for having us here, the Wilmer Area League of Women Voters, and I also want to thank you for providing a chair. It's much nicer than 90 minutes on my feet, so I do appreciate it. I wanted to tell the viewers and the audience here a little bit about myself. I am a recent newcomer to this city. I've been here since 2004, and in Wilmer terms, that is somewhat of a newcomer, but by my standards, I feel quite at home here. I feel like a Wilmerite, truly. But I did come from Wisconsin. I'm hoping that nobody does hold that against me. We came for my husband's job, and the reason we came was because we looked at this community. He interviewed at several places, and honestly, the people were so welcoming and friendly when we interviewed that we were just immediately drawn to the community. And so we settled here. We came with our teenage children. At that time, I was employed with Kraft Foods, and we had decided that once we came to this community and relocated that I would stay home with our children. They were teenagers, and it proved to be a very good choice. I got to know a number of people in the community, in different organizations, and began volunteering and was able to shepherd my children through the teenage years, which is when they really kind of need mom, so it worked out well. But for my husband and I, it wasn't always that way. When we were first married 34 years ago, we were young and struggling. He was an electrician, and I was a computer programmer. And I have to say that we did cut coupons. We had kids in daycare. We had to balance the budget. One day, my husband came home and said, "Honey, I've always wanted to be a doctor." And I said, "Oh, how nice." But we live in this wonderful country where things are possible, and it was possible for us. So I supported him through getting his education, and I had a career with Kraft Foods, and then I had an excellent career, and I'm pleased to be here tonight. Thank you.
Kathy. Good evening, and I also want to thank you for hosting us tonight and for all the people who took the time to join us this evening, both in the audience and at home. My name is Kathy Schwantus, and I am the Ward 1 City Council candidate. I have been married to my husband, Rick, for 36 years. We have two children. Cory lives in West Fargo, and Amanda lives here in Wilmer, and we have two grandchildren ages seven and eight. I currently work for the University of Minnesota, where I wear two hats for the U, one as a Southwest Regional Director for Extension, in which I work with 20 counties in southwestern and west-central Minnesota, and the other as Director of Operations for McRock. And McRock is the mid-central research and outreach center. We are the home to the Extension Regional Office, and we also have a veterinary research lab in the building. Other positions that I've held have been Vice President for a locally-owned bank. I've also worked for the Economic Development Commission as the Assistant Director, and I've been the Dean of Customized Training and Continued Education at Ridgewater College. I have been involved in this community for most of the 30 years with which we've lived here. I've served on various boards, committees, and commissions, including I'm currently the President of the Police and Civil Servant Commission. I am probably the longest-term membership I've had in an organization is with the Chamber of Commerce, and I've served on that board. I'm very involved in the Vision 2040 in a number of different ways, and I would like to say that I believe that my professional career and the various organizations with which I've been involved in have given me the skills that are directly transferable to serving as your City Council member, and that would include visioning and strategic planning, setting goals and accomplishing those goals, working with financial statements, understanding and setting budgets, and living within those budgets, working with human resources. And I see I'm out of my time, but I would appreciate serving and feel it would be humbling to serve as your City Council member. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Julie Osmus, and I am running for the City Council seat in Ward 2. I have lived in Wilmer for over 35 years. I grew up in Madison, Minnesota, and I was the youngest of seven kids. I learned early on in my life that you have to work hard and volunteer and give back to your community. I joined the Army National Guard when I was in high school so that I could afford to buy a car and afford to go to college. I got my two-year degree in Wilmer, and I later went to St. Cloud State University for my four-year degree in criminal justice. I worked for the Wilmer Police Department for 33 years, and I retired two years ago. I started out as a uniform patrol officer. I was a detective for 12 years, and I was a sergeant for 18 years. I know a lot about this city, and I care deeply about what happens in our city. I've been married to my husband, Brian, for over 34 years, and we have two children who are married and live and work and are raising their families in Wilmer. I've been very active in the community for many years. I was selected to go to the Blandon Community Leadership Training and became a part of a core group of citizens that built the YMCA in Wilmer. I also was a part of the delegation that went to Atlanta, Georgia, when Wilmer was selected as an all-American city. I've learned a lot about fiscal responsibility and financial responsibility by being involved in the boards of many organizations, the United Way, the YMCA, the Minnesota Dare Officers Association. I'm currently the State President of Minnesota BPW. I'm the Treasurer of Homefront Connection, Board Member for the Wilmer Area Community Foundation Women's Fund, and a member of the Vision 2040 Leadership Design Team. I have a long history of dedicated service and community involvement, and that's why I want to be your voice in Ward 2 on the City Council.
Steve.
Good evening. I'm Steve Pepin. First of all, it's an honor to be here. I'm here representing the people of Wilmer. I never consider this a me thing. This is a we thing. What people know about me, and I know there's a lot of questions about who Steve Pepin is, people know me as a barber, bar owner, business owner, football passion, and a psychiatrist because all my jobs include listening to people. What people don't know is it's a miracle that I even sit in front of you today. I come from very, very humble beginnings, a family of nine in a two-bedroom humble home, no plumbing, extreme poverty, low self-worth, low self-esteem, and Wilmer saved my life. I wrote 16 schools when I was 24 to get my life on track. One school wrote me back, and that was Ridgewater College. John Vra gave me a chance to play football. I then opened up my barber shop in year two. A mentor of mine, Bill Graves, believed in me, moved me up to First Street. For 13 years, I've listened to 50,000 different conversations. That's 50,000 haircuts on average in the 13 years that I've cut. I understand the people. I know what the people need. I have a family of four. Megan Davis is here today. That's my fiancee. We have a 13-year-old daughter, 11-year-old daughter, 10-year-old daughter, and a five-year-old son. I'm a blue-collar common man with a passion to help people succeed. Thank you.
Fernando. My name is Fernando Alvarado, and I've been in Ward 3 for the past 30 years. My wife works for Rice Memorial Hospital, and she's worked there for the last 32 years. I have two children who have gone through the Wilmer school system and have succeeded through that system, and they've gone on to succeed in college, one becoming a doctor of optometry, the other one is in a master's program. I'm originally from northern New York, humble roots. My mom raised two boys. We joined the Navy. While in the Navy, I determined that it was important to get a college education. I was accepted at Mankato State, came out to Mankato in 1980, graduated in age four, excuse me, and I've been here ever since. I'm very excited about Wilmer and what it has to offer our young people, but I want to make it better. I want to make Wilmer the regional town that it deserves to be. I want to show a cooperation on the City Council so that we can build a desire of our young people to come back to Wilmer to live, work, and play. And I hope that I can do that with cooperation on the City Council, working together. I realize that I will not always get my way, but by compromise, I'm hoping that we can get together and make some great things happen. I'm excited about asking for your vote to represent Ward 3 on November 8. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, friends. My name is Bob Enos, and thank you very much for taking the time out of your schedules this evening to join us tonight. Same goes for the folks that are tuning in to watch us on TV tonight. I dare say that I am probably quite overqualified for this job. I began my career having finished a bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in government, working in the employ of the Mayor of Providence, Rhode Island, who at that time was the youngest sitting mayor of a capital city in America. My first budget that I had to manage at the age of 27, adjusted for inflation, was twice the size of the entire budget for the city of Wilmer. Upon completing six years of public service, I decided to reinvent myself. So I began a consulting career that took me to New York City in 1986. There, I began to do, oh, I guess I'd say, business analysis, some entrepreneurial work, and came to specialize in brokering business relationships between various high-net-worth individuals, companies that might be able to find growth in new markets if they had strategic partners that they didn't have before. That work took me eventually down to Wall Street, where I began as a consultant in an internationally-known commodities consulting firm. I've worked all over the world, Western Europe, Hong Kong, South Africa, Mexico. In doing that, you work with people from many different cultures, and you have to learn to be a listener. I'm a problem solver. I get it done, and I move on, and with that, I'd like to bring Wilmer from a $10-an-hour town to a $20-an-hour town. Thank you.
And we begin our questions. I'll direct it to Kathy Schwantus first. As you go door-to-door campaigning, what is the biggest issue you are hearing from the community?
Well, the biggest question, or the most common question I get is, "Do you know what you're getting into?" And I tell them that, yes, I do. And so I would say from that, the biggest issue is the reputation of our city. This is a great community. I love this city. We have so many positive things happening. We've got a strong business community. We have incredible people that live here that donate their time, their talent, and their financial resources to support this community. We've got incredible organizations. We know how to come together when we need to, but that's not the story that's been told about our city. And I firmly believe that we need to rewrite our city's narrative and share with people the good things that are happening here and be proud of where we live. Thank you.
And to Julie, do you want me to repeat the question? I'll be glad.
Sure.
As you go door-to-door campaigning, what is the biggest issue you are hearing from the community?
Because of the recent flooding and the rain, that has been a hot topic that I've discussed with a number of people. So talking about the flooding and what we could do for water retention, possibly ponds in different areas of the city, the work that the Public Works did, an outstanding job trying to save the septic system, and we take that for granted, you know, that the lights are always going to go on and that we're always going to have that water. And I think maybe we have a bigger appreciation for that now when you're looking at Wasika and Faribault, and they're going through the same heartache that we went through a month ago. And I think we came through it fairly good. You know, for the people who had their basements flooded, it was tough, but the community came together. They helped. They formed the position at the fire department, and I think it showed us, and I think it gave people faith that in the future, if we ever have a natural disaster like that, that this community will come together again and help them with that situation.
Thank you. And Steve.
First thing I hear from a lot of people is, "What are you doing, Pep?" And I say, you know, my passion is telling me this is what I need to do. That was a joke. Fortunately, the biggest thing that I hear about when I'm going around talking to people is the embarrassment of the old recall. I hate to bring that up again, but that's what I tell them is, you know, I think that we can get past that. I've also heard that a few people have talked to me about, "We need somebody from the private sector on the council, not the public sector." I think that Wilmer is in a cycle of the next man up for a lot of these public jobs. I think we just need a common man in there. Those are the type of things that I've heard.
Thank you. Fernando.
I've heard that people love their neighborhoods, knocking on doors. They'll come out and talk to me, and they'll ask me what I'm about. But the thing that I hear about a city council that gets along, cooperates, tries to work together to build Wilmer, I believe that we're not taking a leadership role that we should be doing for a regional city, and that's what I think people want. They want Wilmer to be a regional community. But I've also heard about mosquitoes, the water issue, and those sorts of things. But I believe they really want Wilmer to be the leadership town that it should be, or city, pardon me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bob.
Well, ma'am, I must travel different streets, and the streets that have really caught my eye lately was the walk that I took on the east side of First Street between Trot Avenue and Becker. And you know, when you're walking the sidewalk and looking at those houses really slowly, one at a time, what I see is poverty, and I see sadness. And what I hear from the people who have been longstanding residents there is a feeling of helplessness, hopelessness, and a complete disconnect from those who run this city and seem to run it for their own benefit. You know, it seems to me that for the last 30 years, this city has been run by a little oligarch of 15 people, and it's an unelected 15. It seems to be a 15 that has cozy relationships with senior management and city government. It seems to be an ad hoc organization that through nobody's choice or vote has decided what this city's future should be, and I find that extremely troubling. I think what we're seeing right now, and it's in hyperdrive, is a city that's going through a tremendous transformation that leaves it a city that's unrecognizable to anyone who's grown up here. They see their families being broken up because their kids get working age and can't get a job here and have to leave. So I see grandparents that won't see their grandchildren anymore. I see a town that is stuck.
And Linda.
Well, I would have to say that the number-one thing I am hearing is, "How can we keep Wilmer affordable? How can we maintain what it is we have? And can we fix what we have first and then do something new?" We've got a lot of challenges in front of us. When the mayor's budget was presented for 2016, property taxes, revenues were flat. Same thing's occurring this year, and yet we have rising taxes. Taxes are rising from the schools. Our residents are facing incomes that are not going up at the rate that their tax increases are going to be going up, so they're wondering, "How can we contain these rising costs?" And I think the city's doing an excellent job, by the way, of keeping the lights on, the streets. We take it all so for granted. So when we had this thousand-year flood and we had so much rain, which, by the way, has happened in other areas and may happen again, I have also heard about the stormwater. What can we do about that? And I think that's a big issue we need to address. Thank you.
Thank you. The second question, and we'll begin with Julie. Based on your skills and experiences, on which city committees would your participation be most beneficial?
Well, I would have to say that being on the police department for 33 years, probably public safety would be my first choice. I have a good working knowledge of what we're dealing with in the city, the challenges that we've faced over the years, the things that we've done to overcome those challenges, where we're going in the future, what things we have in plan, what dreams that we can possibly put in place. So public safety is very near and dear to my heart. I would say probably the other one, possibly finance, to make sure that we're fiscally responsible and that we are using the tax dollars that we have, that we're economical with using the money that we have coming in effectively for what it is that the community needs.
Very good. Steve, I'll repeat the question for you. Based on your skills and experience, on which city committees would your participation be most beneficial?
For me, being a barber, I've spent a lot of time getting to know in all different cultures, so anything to do with multicultural, to teach people different things than that. That and troubled youth. I think we need more programs, more things where we can help people through their challenges and their troubles, and not just label them. I think a lot of times in this community, as soon as somebody makes one mistake, they're automatically shunned. I think that we need to focus more on what can we do for them and take an old-school community approach. If we want to get anywhere, we got it. We're only as strong as our weakest link. That's it.
Thank you. Fernando.
I would like to think that I would be of benefit to the Planning Commission. I had some experience with them in encouraging new business to come to town and trying to promote that. I'd also like to be part of the Park and Rec because I want to work with our youth and have them be able to come to Wilmer and enjoy Wilmer. When you come to Wilmer, that's one of the first things you hear about is our parks system, and that's what families like, and that's what I want to promote. I want to promote something for our families to come to and enjoy. So anything that we can do to encourage our youth and their families and to get them to be a part of Wilmer, I want to be a part of.
Thank you. Bob.
Well, I would propose that each of the City Council members rotate through all of the committees so that each City Council person gets to spend one year on one committee and moves on. This idea that we should only focus our work on those areas that we're comfortable with, no. We should focus our areas, our attention on all of these areas, and we should push our comfort levels. We should have well-rounded knowledge of every facet of the way that the city works, and to do that, I don't see any other better alternative than to serve on every single committee. I also think that we've seen some council people over the years who have sort of made a career out of sitting on one council. I'm familiar with at least one council member who spent 15 years on one committee. One of the things that hap-- two of the things that happen in a scenario like that is you don't have any new blood coming into that organization that brings new ideas and new vitality and a new set of eyes and ears to look at problems. The other challenge it presents is that relationships get a little bit too ingrained, and it can promote cronyism, and we don't want that. Thank you.
Linda.
Well, I think that the first committee I would love to serve on would be the Finance. I have a private-sector employment background. I understand about balance sheets, profit and loss, all of that. I was an IBM Business Partner, marketing to businesses, and I think I would really enjoy that and be of service there. I also would like to be in the community development, perhaps. Planning would be another good one. I wouldn't mind the rotating through, except I like that idea from the standpoint of being exposed to all of the different areas, but on the other hand, what's happening to us right now is we have experienced council members that are leaving and some staff that's leaving from the city, and so we have a wealth of background that is exiting. And when you've sat on a committee for a few years, you have a lot of knowledge you've gleaned, and that's very useful. So there's that kind of pro and con to spending some time on a committee. So I guess that would be my perspective. I would like to be learned at all the committees, but focus on several.
Thank you. Kathy.
Thank you. I think a very natural position for me to serve on would be the Candio High County and City of Wilmer Economic Development Commission's Joint Powers Board. Having worked there as the Assistant Director, I certainly have an understanding of how the organization functions, business subsidy agreements, tax increment financing, tax abatement, financing options that are available through the Economic Development Commission. I have a strong interest in economic development, and I think I have some good skills to be able to walk in and have a good understanding of how it works and functions. A second committee I would enjoy serving on would be the Finance Committee. Again, I have worked with setting budgets, worked with reading financial statements. We have, with the facilities study that was just completed this last July, we have some significant issues before us as a city, and I would be very interested in helping to solve and address some of those issues and do some long-term planning.
Thank you. Next question, we begin with Steve. How does your past experience prepare you to serve an ethnically diverse Wilmer?
Since I can remember, I've been around all different ethnicities. I understand the struggles. I understand racism. I think it's alive and well. One thing about me, you're always going to hear, "Real." I think it's alive and well in Wilmer. I think it's something that needs to be fixed. If I can be a leader of some of that, that's great. 50,000 conversations through the barber shop of ethnic people get their haircuts a lot more than regular people. I just feel like I'm the guy for something like that.
Thank you. Thank you. Fernando, would you like me to repeat it?
Would you please repeat that?
I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
How does your past experience prepare you to serve an ethnically diverse Wilmer?
My name is Fernando Alvarado. I, I've been fortunate to serve in the United States Navy, and in there I had to work with a whole bunch of different guys from throughout the country, even Jamaica, and we had to work together as a team. Today, I, I come to Wilmer, and I've met a, a beautiful community and our Somali neighbors and, and friends. And, and they're, they've got energy and laughter, and, and, and they want to make Wilmer a better place, and I want to be a part of that. Wilmer has the opportunity to be very cosmopolitan. And, and we have great restaurants, we got a cosmopolitan high school. This is a, this is a diamond. And if anybody says it isn't, I don't know what they're looking at. We have to take advantage of those opportunities and, and promote those and enjoy those and get to know each other so we have a better community. We're, we're, we're on the verge of some wonderful things, and the way we're going to do that is by working together and promoting each other for success. Thank you.
My grandparents came to the United States from the Azores, which are some godforsaken islands out in the middle of the North Atlantic Ocean owned by Portugal. My grandfather's name was Manuel Antonio Nacia. And I find that, for purposes of this discussion, quite irrelevant. You know, I think so much is made today about this business of diversity and ethnicity as if it's an end in of itself. I rather look at diversity as a blank slate. It's neither bad nor good, it's just what it is. And the question is, look, I'm a cook. Some of my friends here know that I can put together a pretty good meal. But when I'm cooking, what I've got to cook with is what's on the table. And if those ingredients are good, and if I'm a good cook and I can combine them well, we're going to have something nice. And if not, we're going to have something that I would much rather forget. It seems the question to me these days really isn't about whether we're going, or not we're going to make diversity work, because we don't have a say over that. We each have a say over our own destiny. We work hard, we support our families, we pursue an American dream, or we don't. What concerns me is that we can't have a conversation about this without being demonized, marginalized, and castigated as a racist. You can't fix what you can't talk about. Thank you.
Linda?
Okay, my past experience. Well, I would have to say I have, the majority of my time prior to coming to Wilmer, any volunteer opportunities I had were slim, but I still had them. They were with my organizations I worked for, such as Ronald McDonald House, where there would be families from very many different walks of life, and we would provide meals, food packs, where we would work with all different walks of life, and we would pack meals for people. And in my church, a lot of the work there recently, now that I have the luxury of time, has been through my church. That's a large area where I do serve. One area has been with homeless people, actually, and that's, that's quite a diverse population, and it really opened my eyes, I have to tell you. When I first became involved in that, I turned my life around entirely, when I realized the struggles that people are having. And I guess that's what really tears at my heart right now, is that we do provide for the needs of the people in our community that we don't even see, but they're still there. That's, that would be something I'd like to focus on.
Thank you. Kathy?
Sure, thank you. Throughout my career, I have worked with diverse populations in almost every job that I have had. As a lender at a locally-owned bank, I had many customers that were from ethnically diverse backgrounds. When I worked at the Economic Development Commission, one of the projects I worked on was the Wilmer Area Multicultural Marketplace, which was a predecessor to the business center that we now have downtown. Today, working with extension, one of our goals is that our programs be reflective of the audience that we are serving. We recently took our SNAP Ed program, and we converted it into Somali and also into a Latino-based program so that they were culturally inclusive and also using the language that, that was, of course, comfortable to the individuals that were taking part in those programs. I just, we're working with the Vision 2040 Leadership Program, and we've made great efforts to be inclusive in that leadership program as well. But I would say that throughout my career, I have cultured friendships and relationships with my coworkers. They have become my friends, and the more that we sit and chat, I realize that we have far more that is similar and far more dreams and wants and desires for ourselves and for our children and for our grandchildren than what we have as differences. And when we can come together and have good conversation, we can appreciate each other and respect one another. So, thank you.
And Julie?
I don't think that we could be a part of Wilmer without having contact and experience with ethnically diverse populations. Being on the police department for 33 years, I definitely worked with many cultures, whether that was because they had maybe a domestic, maybe they had, their dog ran away, maybe they were involved in a car accident. But I've been involved with people of different cultures for many years. I also teach at Ridgewater College, and so a lot of my students are ethnically diverse. And I've even invited some of them to my house for Thanksgiving dinner. They were from Chicago and didn't have any place to go, so I invited them for Thanksgiving. I'm also involved in a mentoring program with young girls, and those are also very ethnically diverse. We start with the girls when they're in fifth grade, and we mentor them until they're in ninth grade. And I've had, I think, about six different girls over the last 20 years. And so I've gotten to know their families, and I've gotten to know them and their issues. And just also teaching DARE. I mean, you go into a classroom, I've taught DARE for 23 years. You go into a classroom, and you cannot believe the different cultures and the children that are in those classrooms. So I think our kids, the youth, are fortunate that we're preparing them to enter a world that is going to be very diverse.
Thank you. Now, Fernando, I'll read the next question. We'll begin with you. In light of the difficulties in hiring and retaining a city administrator, should Wilmer switch to a city manager format?
Well, I'm going to have to be a little truthful for, for the answer to that question. I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't know that I know, have enough knowledge or experience to, to formulate an honest and true answer. We have to let our, our, our city employees do their work. We have to put our trust and faith in them and let them do what they do best. We can't, I've heard the term "micromanage." We have, Julie mentioned, very capable, capable people that are heading our departments. We have some opportunities coming with hiring new people to head these departments. We have to put our faith and trust in their experience and let them do their job. And so I don't know how to answer that fairly. So I'm going to have to learn. Thank you.
Well, I know how to answer that. And I couldn't disagree with Fernando more. Look, faith and trust are what we talk about at church and with our families. But this is business, friends. This isn't about faith, and it's not about trust. One thing that, one takeaway that I had with these debacles that took place when Ms. Stevens separated from the city and when Mr. Cruz separated with the city is like this. People in their line of work come into a new town, and very, very quickly, they have to size up the lay of the land. They have to figure out who the players are, where the godfathers are, where they're going to get their protection, where they have to make things happen, and who's going to run interference for them. And I find it fairly instructive that in both of those cases, they glommed onto the Chamber of Commerce faster than you could spit. They seemed to show complete disdain for the city council and seemed to run as if they were an unelected government. And I'm quite against that. I think that we should also give some thought to amending the city charter so that we have at least one at-large position, so that we can have minority participation in there, because otherwise you will never see a person of color on this council. I would, rather than seeing a city manager, prefer to see a traditional mayor. No city manager. Have a mayor, let that mayor have a budget director and a chief of staff. And if you don't like that mayor in four years, you don't have to jump through these hoops and treat it like an apt of God and give him a severance package for $200,000. You just get rid of him.
Linda, would you like me to read the question again, or not? Are you fine?
Sure.
Okay, I'll read it one more time. In light of the difficulties in hiring and retaining a city administrator, should Wilmer switch to a city manager format?
Well, I don't think the difficulties in retaining or hiring a city administrator would be solved with a city manager. I have yet to, until you understand what the nature is of the problems, and I'm not certain that we have those problems, I'm not, haven't heard a case for why a city manager would be a solution. So I'm hearing a question and not necessarily hearing what problem is being solved. So I can't go any further with that.
Very good. Kathy?
Well, I'm going to agree with Linda on this. I don't believe that, that the issue has been the position as either a manager, as a manager administrator, I believe the position should be a city administrator. It is important that we do hire a new city administrator who has strong skills, and I think the most important skills that individual have, has, is that of interpersonal skills, working with other people. The administrator needs to be able to establish trust between the council and the administrator, establish trust between the business community and the administrator, between the citizens and the administrator, and certainly with the city employees. So I think very strong interpersonal skills and communication skills is critical. And I also believe it needs to be someone who has strong experience. We have some major issues ahead of us that need to be dealt with, and, and the individual is going to have to have all of the, the skills necessary and knowledge necessary as an administrator. It's certainly not an entry-level position, so, but I do believe it should be an administrator's position. Thank you.
Julie?
I also think that we should have a city administrator's position instead of a city manager. According to our charter, we have a strong council, weak mayor, and presently, an administrator. And I think it should stay that way. As far as the difficulty of hiring the administrator, again, we, you know, we are going on our third city administrator in the last three years, but there are other cities that have it worse. There's some that are going on their sixth and seventh years. But that doesn't make it okay, because that doesn't make it okay for Wilmer and what we have to deal with. And I think it has to start at the council level. And I think we have to have respect and a working relationship between the council and the city administrator. Let them do their job, respect the city employees, let them do their job. It is not the council's job to micromanage. And hire a city administrator that's qualified and support them and communicate with the council.
Thank you. Steve?
This is something I honestly can't answer without looking into it more and getting a better understanding of it all. However, I agree with Julie, we got to let people do their job, and we all need to work together and get along and work as a team.
Very good. On to the next question, and we begin with Bob. How will you represent or work with others in your ward and beyond who you may have politically disagreed with in the past?
I'm so glad that you're getting around to this question. It seems, because it seems to me that an art has been lost in the city. As someone pointed out, we have what's called a strong council, weak mayor form of government, and we have ward representation for a reason. At the end of the day, as much as I may care about what's going on throughout the city, my first obligation and my first order of business is to advocate and represent the interests of the people specifically in my ward. That's why I talked about the, the conditions that I see on the east side of First between Trot and Becker and up into Sperryville and in the backside of my neighborhood where we've seen so much flooding in Garfield. We seem to not, we seem to not pursue the old-fashioned town meetings, representing the people who are in your neighborhood so that the council person isn't expressing his or her opinions, because I'm just one of many. My job is to be a vessel and to be a communicator. And towards that end, by the way, I, I hope some of you have taken a look at my website. It's called FriendsOfEnos.com, in which I describe my positions on the issues that I think are most important based on what folks are telling me. But once I become your city councilman, that's not the end of that website. Because at that point, I want that to morph into a social media platform through which we can basically maintain a virtual ward meeting all the time.
Okay. Linda? Would you like me to repeat it?
It would be fine.
Okay. How will you represent or work with others in your ward and beyond who you may have politically disagreed with in the past?
I don't believe that political disagreements have anything to do with the office of city council. This is a bipartisan, not politically related position, so those kinds of things should certainly not play into what we are trying to accomplish for the citizens of our city. We need to all be people who are capable of consensus, communication, and respect. And if we cannot do that, and there's something that politically causes us to not be able to solve the problems in front of us, then we shouldn't be holding this office. And I think that I have worked in positions where I've collaborated with people, such as when I was co-president of the Humane Society, trying to build, raise funds and build a new building, which we did successfully. There was a lot of collaboration, and I'm pretty sure we all came from some different political leanings, had nothing to do with what we needed to accomplish. So, that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
And Kathy?
I think that disagreement can actually be healthy. When I've worked on projects and we have disagreed on certain things, sometimes working through those items can cause us to create a better solution than we ever would have had in the first place if we'd all simply agreed with one another. I think that the real issue is that when, when we disagree with one another, we lose respect for one another. So I think the real issue isn't disagreement, it's being able to agree to disagree, walk away with respect for one another, and come back to the table another day to continue the conversation.
Thank you. Julie?
I also believe that politics really don't have any place in what's in the best interest of Wilmer. No matter what political affiliation you connect with, it's what's the best thing for the citizens of Wilmer. And I think people know that I'm approachable, people know that I'm reasonable, and even if we would disagree, I would like to hope that there could be compromise and that we could come to a solution that, again, is in the best interest of the city.
Thank you. Steve?
Can you repeat the question, please?
How will you represent or work with others in your ward and beyond who may have polit, who, excuse me, who you may have politically disagreed with in the past?
I can honestly say that I don't really disagree with anybody's political views because I respect their opinion. For example, I'm surrounded by Julie Osment signs in my ward. My neighbors still bring me cookies, I still go fishing with my neighbors. Just because Julie's signs are up doesn't mean I, you know, hate my neighbor. I think we all need to get to know our neighbors and disrespect people's opinions.
Thank you. And Fernando?
Oh, could you say that one more time, please? I think it's important.
It's a long one.
Yeah.
How will you represent or work with others in your ward and beyond who you may have politically disagreed with in the past?
I think I mentioned earlier, I'm not always right, I'm not always wrong. I think I mentioned earlier, I'm not always right, I'm not always wrong, they're not always right, they're not always wrong. I think what we have to do is to listen to each other, work together to a common goal and, and move on. Once we reach an agreement and it's a good agreement, we, we move on and, and accept it. We're going to be in this community together, and we've got to learn to work together. And we're not always going to be right. I'm not always going to be right. I, I'm not always going to get my way. And a lot of times, I don't get my way. And it turns out being a better way when I don't. It's because I've listened and I've heard what other people said, they've added to it and made it better. And that's how, that's how I think we're going to move forward. We have to understand that we're not always right, we're not always wrong, we can compromise and we can get a good solution. I think that's what Kathy alluded to. So I'm, I'm very excited about that. Compromise, working together, making a better Wilmer.
Thank you. On to the next question, and we begin with Linda this time. Is Wilmer a sanctuary city? Is Wilmer a sanctuary city?
I have no idea.
Well, my understanding of a sanctuary city, I would say, no, we have not been designated as a sanctuary city officially.
Julie?
I don't know if we're a sanctuary city, but I'd like to believe that we're a welcoming city and that we're a city where anybody would want to be comfortable coming to live and to raise their families and to start a business, and that we're a great regional center. But I can't say that that makes us a sanctuary city, but we're a great place to live.
Steve?
I don't know if we're a sanctuary city either. I think we're a great city.
Fernando?
I'm going to go with the consensus here. I don't know if sanctuary city. I, I love Wilmer, I love the people of Wilmer, I think we have a, a lot to offer. I think of all the craftsmen that we have, the artisans, that we're, we're just a great town. We just gotta promote that, we just gotta get excited and promote that. I'm not sure that we're a sanctuary city. I'm not sure I understand that question, but we're a great town, great city.
Bob?
I have to confess, this is a pretty odd question to be posing to this group. For starters, I think it would be fair, since you're an educational group, to inform the public as to what a sanctuary city really is, because I don't think anybody at this table knows.
Oh, I know what it is, Bob.
Okay.
I just have no idea if we're a sanctuary city.
A sanctuary city, folks, for those who don't know what that is, and this is my understanding, we've got a lawyer in the room, he'll probably straighten me out if I make too much of an error here. Sanctuary city means that if law enforcement comes upon a fellow, or a man or a woman in this town who they arrest or have some reason to come into contact with, and they find out that that person is here illegally, an undocumented immigrant or what we, what I still call an illegal alien, a sanctuary city would not report that person to the federal authorities for fear that they might be deported. So what they are essentially doing as a sanctuary city, my understanding, is that they're thumbing their nose at federal law. No, I don't think that makes a heck of a lot of sense.
Very good. The next question, and we'll begin with Kathy. Describe how you view your role as city council member in dealing with city employees.
Well, that's a very good question. I actually appreciate that question. As a city council member, I believe it is our role and responsibility to set the vision and some strategies for the city to be able to accomplish the goals that it needs to accomplish. However, our work should be directly with the city administrator, and then the employees of the, the city would fall under the administrator's responsibilities. So I do not believe that it is a city council member's responsibility to go directly to a city council, or, excuse me, to a city employee other than to the administrator.
Julie?
I think that as a city council person, we definitely have to treat the city employees with respect and civility. There are some communities that are getting into serious trouble because of the dysfunction on their councils and what's happening to their insurance rates. The insurance companies are increasing the rates of cities and putting them on notice that if the city employees would personally sue the cities, that they are going to have to pay $250,000 per claim, where before it would have been $500 because of the dysfunction on the city council. Lake Elmo is on the verge, Maplewood has been warned, and they're looking at increasing, increasing their insurance rates because of the city council behavior. So I think it's very important as city council members that we respect our city employees and that we treat them civilly.
Steve?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Describe how you view your role as city council member in dealing with city employees.
I think my role, as well as everybody else on the council's role, is to be a strong leader. People that work under you or for you aren't going to respect you as much or work as hard or get along if leaders aren't getting along and work. I, I know a lot of those people personally, and I've seen their hard work and commitment. And I think that they deserve strong leadership.
Thank you. Fernando?
I believe that we have to provide the direction, the vision, and then we have to use the chain of command, let the city administrator do, do his job, and have them, have him disseminate to the various department heads what we expect and what we hope to achieve. So I believe that we should use, use them. We have to respect our employees, we have to respect each other, so I think we have to take that into account.
Thank you. Bob?
Again, let's talk business, folks, and the respect and the softball stuff, and the fluff's really nice, I'm getting all... If we had a strong mayor and a weak council, like many larger cities like Minneapolis, Chicago, Boston, whatever, had, if we had that form of government, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. The chain of command would be very clear. A mayor has a chief of staff, the chief of staff oversees those folks who run departments. If the mayor doesn't like the job the chief of staff is doing, he corrects him or he fires her. Pretty simple. But it gets a little bit complicated in Wilmer, because the executive function here is not managed by a strong mayor, instead it's managed by eight people, all part timers, working on short money, have their own careers, have their own businesses, it's, it's almost a volunteer job. So we tend to expect too much. Now, going back to that metaphor with a strong mayor and a chief of staff, the metaphor for us is the chief of staff, in our case, is a city administrator, and the strong mayor is actually our city council. So if the city council isn't happy with the performance that the city administrator is able to evoke from department heads, I'd say get rid of them. If the twins manager isn't, if the twins aren't doing well next year, now, that's not the manager's fault, but somebody's head's got to roll. I mean, that's life.
Linda?
Okay, so to go back to the question as I heard it, I thought it was on the role in, of council in dealing with city employees, city staff, and I assume that would include the administrator as well, because that's also a city employee.
Employee.
Okay. Well, I think that the city council would oversee, provide vision, leadership, strategy to the city administrator, who would then manage the rest of all of the staff. I don't think that precludes council from interacting with city staff for various reasons, for projects, for information, whatever needs to be done. I, I don't think there's a barrier between council and staff that consists of the administrator. But I think that generally, information should flow, and if it did flow through the administrator to council, I think you'd see a lot less trying to go around the back door and getting it from staff.
Very good. Kathy?
And I believe I started with that.
Yes, I've got the next question for you.
I'll start that one.
Am I confused?
I think the, the next question goes to Julie.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was confused. What budget priorities would you like to see in the city budget during your term?
I think the message loud and clear from the citizens is infrastructure, that the city budget has to, we have to be looking at some of our aging buildings, and we have to be cognizant of sticking with our road plans, and I think we have to look at the flooding issue. So infrastructure, I think that is the number one issue that everybody seems to be talking about. And I, I think the mayor does have some money, more money every year has been set aside for the street development and for street repairs, and I think we have to stick to that budget and listen to our engineers and listen to our public works department about what needs to be done and stay on that schedule.
Thank you. Steve?
Can you please repeat the question?
What budget priorities would you like to see in the city budget during your term?
One thing that I've been doing the last couple of weeks is learning a lot about the budgets. Got a few things with me today. It's something that I didn't really understand or know much about, but I'm starting to find out. However, I do think that we need to find ways to make things happen with as little money as possible. I don't believe taxing and taxing our citizens always is the answer.
Thank you. Fernando?
I, I have to agree with Julie. It seems like we always hear about our roads and our, our poor roads, and I'd like to keep the focus on that, keep the focus on quality of water. Those are all things that our, our citizens want, and we have to provide for, to get them to come to Wilmer, and that's what we want. That's, in the end, that's what we want to have happen. So I would say infra, infrastructure, our, our streets especially. I'm surprised they've gotten this bad. Anyways, that's infrastructure.
Thank you.
My concern about the way priorities are established in our city is that the, you can ask me what I would like to see us spend money on, but I'm, I'm just one citizen. Who the heck am I? Goes back to the question you asked us some time ago about ward politics. My job is to find out what they need done, and then I will come here and tell the rest of the city council and the mayor what my constituents are telling me. And, and short of that, I don't think anybody cares what I want. But we do have a problem here in Wilmer. We have a budget submitted by a mayor who's a career bureaucrat who never saw a budget increase that he didn't like. We looked at an eight and a half percent increase in his last budget submission, the school department showing us a 13 and a half percent increase in its budget, and the chairperson of that board said they'd be raising it even more if state statute let them. We have a school project that is going to, from what I can see, with interest payments and outfitting the building, going to approach $100 million voted on through the approval of what was probably no more than 100, maybe 150 households. Imagine, 150 households, whether they have that kind of power under our city charter to put an entire city $100 million in debt. There's a problem with the way we establish priorities here. The problem is, we don't ask anybody.
Linda?
Okay, budget priorities. I think what I would do is take a look at the way we prioritize the different things we're going to take care of in our capital improvement plan. Now, there are about 80 to 85% of our city budget is labor, staff, employees, things we really can't do a whole lot about, except try to contain that. The other is keeping and fixing what we have. And what I kind of want to say is that, the way I look at this is common sense. We just had a facility study done for $50,000 presented to the city council with all of our infrastructure at various stages of decay. And they, that consultant said to the council, what you need to do is decide with these buildings, what you're comfortable with, what you would like to see the condition of these buildings, and set a plan to do that. And that's what would be my focus. At my house personally, this is how I do it. I don't landscape my house before I fix the roof or the furnace, and yet that's exactly what our city is doing now. We're spending $800,000 on a splash pad at Rice Park, and we cannot fix the Civic Center roof. Two bids have been rejected because they're overestimate and they're over budget, and we don't know where the money's coming from. That's inappropriate prioritization, in my opinion, so I would do that differently. Thank you.
Kathy?
The number one priority for me in the budget would be our infrastructure. And Linda is correct in that in July of this year, we received a facilities study, and that study said that we need to address $3.5 million worth of improvements immediately. In the next 10 years, we need to address $22.5 million worth of improvements. In addition to those facilities that were identified in the study, the municipal utilities is also looking at a $16 million project, plus a $4.5 million project for the substation. And that hasn't even yet addressed the, the manage, the pavement management program or the stormwater sewer issue that we have. So we are looking at some significant investments that need to be made, both short term and long term. We need to have a comprehensive plan to be able to do that. I think a part of the problem is that we've been putting Band-Aids on our buildings. We've not been addressing them, we've not been setting money aside to be able to address these significant investments. It, I don't think there's a citizen in this community that's going to want to have to address all of these issues at one time. It's just not feasible. And if we don't start paying attention to it, if we don't start planning for it, it's going to be a bill that we can't possibly control or manage. So I, I agree that the infrastructure is our number one priority.
Thank you. Julie?
I started it.
I'm looking straight at you again, I'm, it's my, my mistake. So I go to Steve next. What is your plan for working with the continued rehabilitation of downtown area of Wilmer? What is your plan for working with the continued rehabilitation of the downtown area of Wilmer?
Well, that directly affects me. I started my barber shop in downtown Wilmer. I, I did move, but I loved it down there for business reasons, and Bill Graves giving me the opportunity to move, I, I moved. I'm not as involved with the downtown anymore. I, I shop down there at times. I miss Harwar Hank, but I'd like to get more involved.
All right. Fernando?
Well, I'm very excited about what's happening downtown. There's a lot of good energy down there, good food, good stores. I think we have to promote them. I think we have to use them. I, I think we have to not be afraid to, to walk the streets and go into the businesses and, and stuff like that. You can get dates and you can get all kinds of grains and, and stuff like that, that you might not find at, at the local grocery store, Cashwise or Cub or, or all these. So it's, it's an opportunity to explore and get involved and know, know the, the local merchant and take advantage of that. It's, I guess I'd have to promote it by being part of it.
Very good. Thank you. Bob?
Well, the downtown situation is one that's near and dear to my heart, I'll tell you that. And I don't, first off, it's not a downtown anymore, it hasn't been a downtown forever. First Street is downtown now. That's where all our commerce is, our shopping is, and, and truly, it's really the only thoroughfare in the city that touches all four warits. And you need, well, short of using the bypasses, you need to use First Street to get from one end of the town to the other. I'd say that qualifies as a true downtown. Our old downtown is what I've described as a neighborhood in transition, which in our case and in many means, a neighborhood on life support. If, I don't know, I don't know what Vital- I don't know what vitality these folks are seeing, but when I walk down Litchfield Avenue, it tears my heart out. I see newspapers in the windows. I see windows that have been installed on two-by-fours. I mean, I see garbage in the streets. It's deplorable, and that's why we're seeing stores leave downtown. I mean, let's not kid each other. We can't change a situation that we will not acknowledge. But I'll be coming out on my website within the next two weeks on offering a proposal for what I think will be so totally transformative of downtown that you'll be crazy not to jump on it.
Linda?
Well, as being a city council member, I would see that all of our neighborhoods need to be kept in focus, that they not deteriorate, that they have... are kept up to standards and the way they should be. I now serve on the Economic Development Commission. I'm vice president on the operations board, and we have invested on the downtown Historic 313 project. And I think that a combination of public and private investment is what makes successful projects in an area. I think now it's time for the private sector to take over after the public has been invested in this, and let's see what the market can do, what the market will drive for that area. That's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Kathy?
If I were a business owner downtown, I would become frustrated with the conversation about our downtown being dead and a filthy, dirty place to be. I think of the businesses that are there: Rice Hospital, Conway Dothan Schmizing, Hanson Anderson Larson Law Firm, Christensen and Associates. You can go on and on about the businesses that are downtown, and we have very strong businesses downtown. I would agree that we have storefronts that need some help, and I would agree that we have apartments in the upstairs, the second-story level of many of those businesses downtown that could use revitalization. I'd like to see us work with either a small cities grant, see what the HRA would be able to do, possibly bring in a partner such as the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. They do an excellent job at putting together plans that are complex as far as financing, and I'd like to see us partner with them and revitalize portions of our downtown. Thank you.
Julie?
I agree. I think we have to remember that... And look, we have a very vital downtown. Kathy mentioned a number of them, but there's insurance agencies, there's banks. And I was recently just talking with a young man that was looking to open a business. He was looking for a location in downtown, and there was not a single open building for him to put his business. That says a lot. And when I said, "I grew up in Madison, Minnesota," when I look at some of the small towns, Appleton and Ortonville and Madison and Dawson, all of their main streets are dying. All of their main streets are half... Half of their buildings are empty. They can't even... They don't even have a store to buy a pair of men's socks anymore. And we have a vital downtown. It's different. It's different than what it was 30 years ago, when I moved here, 40 years ago when I moved here. You're not going to shop at C. Suzanne's and Habix's and J.C. Penney's like we used to. Now we go to the mall. It's just different. And I do think that we can enforce some of our ordinances, and we can enforce some of our building codes to make some of the storefronts more appealing, but we have a vital downtown.
Thank you. And thanks to all of you for answering a variety of questions, and it is time now for closing remarks. You each will have two minutes, and we will begin with Bob Enos and work that way.
Well, thank you again, Andrea, for having me, and it's been a pleasure. I think this year's election cycle, I think most of us can agree, across the country at the federal level, is probably the most interesting and provocative... Certainly the most interesting and provocative election cycle I've ever seen in my lifetime. And frankly, I don't think that Wilmer's election cycle is any less important, because like the United States, we're at a crossroads, folks. We can either try to have a market-driven economy in which, well, we go one of two ways. The ways that I've heard so far, discussed by the same old insiders, who, by the way, are represented at this table by Mr. Alvarado and Ms. Asmus and Ms. Schwantes, we'll call them the Chamber of Commerce Party, or the Wilmer Moving Forward Party, or whatever the slogan of the day is. They're the folks that want to carry on Mr. Heike's legacy of spending your way out of this problem. That's the liberal approach. If you haven't fixed the problem yet, it just means you haven't spent enough tax dollars yet. But anyone who's been in the private sector knows that when you're using your own money, no, 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 no. You give it a fair shot, and when it's not working it, you jettison it like you read about, and you move on to something else, like the building is burning down. We've got to get serious around here, folks, and we've got to stop throwing these softball questions out and decide what kind of town we want to leave for our children. The town that I see, when I look in the horizon, is a town that pays not $10 an hour, $20 an hour. That's not unrealistic. Hornwell Foods down in Austin, they have a union agreement. They pay $17 an hour. Our folks out at Jennie O. are making $11 an hour. Now, if you're a Somali family with both of your parents working, and you have eight kids, and you're working for $10 an hour and 40 hours a week, guess what? We're supporting you for $100,000 a year. That's not good for you, and that's not good for us. You need a living wage so that you can get off welfare.
Fernando will be next.
Okay. Well, I was the president of Cardinal Pride. I was the president of the swimming board for the stingrays, and we wanted stuff, we needed stuff, and we pulled together, we made it happen. You can go with the doom and gloom, the same old, same old, but you know what? The same old isn't going to cut it. Mr. Enos here is preaching doom and gloom and scare tactics and all this other stuff. You can jump on board with that, but the train is going to leave, and he's going to be waving goodbye. I would encourage you to get excited about the community we live in, participate in the community we live in, and make Wilmer a better town. We can do that, and we should do that. It's time for a change. Thank you. And thanks, legal women voters, for having us tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Steve Pepin?
First of all, I'd be grateful, and I'm asking for the Wilmer community in Ward Two for their votes. I believe I'm a problem solver. I get along with all people. I think we need to start looking at people as individuals and not groups. That's race, religion, male, female, economic status. Each individual should have an equal opportunity to succeed in this town. I'm a family man, and I'm proud of this community, and I'm proud to be here. Straight up, I may not be the most seasoned politician. I can't talk like these guys. These guys here, great. I mean, some of the stuff I heard, I totally agree with, some I totally disagree with. I'm real, I'm honest. I care about a lot of people in this town. I think that this town, more than half the population don't have a voice. I feel like I can be that voice. I again ask the citizens of Wilmer and Ward Two for their vote. Thank you.
You're welcome. Julie?
Okay. First off, I would like to thank the legal women voters for sponsoring this forum, KWLM for airing it, and Rack Eight, Eighteen for filming it. It's really appreciated. I care deeply about the city of Wilmer and our future. We have a number of goals and issues that we need to address in the next couple of years. We've talked about some of those tonight. Some we haven't. Failing infrastructure, we've talked about. The local option sales tax that's coming up, the Y Project. I want to see things happen, but I want us to be fiscally responsible and effectively use the tax dollars that we have available without having to raise taxes, if at all possible. I believe we need stability and respect in our city government. There needs to be trust, loyalty, and cooperation for great things to happen in Wilmer as a regional center. I understand that there are risks and responsibilities to serving, but ultimately, an effective council person is responsible to the citizens of Wilmer. I've served our country in the Army National Guard. I've protected and served this city for over 30 years, and I would be honored to represent Ward Two by serving on the city council. I would appreciate your vote on November 8th.
Thank you. Kathy Schwantis?
Well, Andrea, I was going to use my time to talk about my skills, my community involvement, my passion for this community, and all the things that I personally would like to do serving on this city council, and just speak about myself personally. But I have to be honest with you. I find what Mr. Enos proposed, as far as Alvarado, Asmus, and Schwantis, as a really exciting team. I would love to serve at this council table with those three, and I think if you're looking for a positive change in our city council, I think that's the way you should vote on November 8th, and I would thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Linda?
And I would like to also thank you for conducting this forum. I think we've heard a lot of interesting things from all of our candidates here. I was asked why I wanted to run for city council, and I have to be perfectly honest now. The unsuccessful recall effort last year was divisive for the city of Wilmer and particularly painful for its target, a popular and dedicated councilman who'd been reelected numerous times, most recently in November of the prior year. Those behind the recall were not only misguided and uninformed, their actions lent the appearance of malicious intent due to its clearly inadequate claims. Listed under "What Makes a Good Public Official" by the City of Wilmer Campaign Manual, is listed "Ability to Accept the Will of the Majority." By her prominent involvement in the recall efforts subsequent to a clear election outcome, my opponent has demonstrated that she does not have this qualification. And that is exactly why I'm running. I think I have skills, talents, abilities, that would lend in healing this city and bringing unity instead of more divisiveness. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thanks to all of you. We appreciate our evening together. Let's give them a round of applause. And I just want to remind our audience, remember November 8th. It is so very important that everyone who is able to vote should vote. If they cannot vote on November 8th, remember you have the opportunity to vote absentee. And many people in Minnesota are doing it. So we have many important local elections, regional, state elections, of course, as well as national. I especially want to remind everyone in the audience that, again, we have candidate forms every week. Next week is our state representatives. So we will have both representatives from 17A and two from 17B here. Next Tuesday, that's October 4th, it'll be at 7 o'clock again, right here in the council chambers. Special thanks again to the radio, our TV, local TV, and I want to also mention West Central Tribune. They're here, and they took pictures earlier. You'll be reading more in probably tomorrow's newspaper. So I appreciate all of our local media participating with us. It's so very important. And thank Leaguers tonight for being here and keeping us on time. I appreciate it. And we look forward to next week and all of October. So vote November 8th.
Thank you, Andrea. [applause] We survive.